Yeah, yeah.
And she really enjoys it.
It's from our neck of the woods.
Oh, Jersey.
My wife, my wife knows.
Watching out of work. Oh, interesting. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no. Leaving. That's one of them. I don't care what I do.
I can be engaged. Have losing.
Walk out the door. Face brings down. Oh, brings down. It's all life somewhere else.
Yeah.
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 Hmm?
Well, we'll find us some more. Actually, I'm going to be in the Memphis tournament Sunday.
Excellent. Did I tell you?
Thought they were good, but.
Yeah, might as well.
Yes. It don't waste any good.
Oh, really?
Haven't you established? Our group was credit where you're going.
Shotgun.
Shotgun.
Yeah.
I don't think it will go. Maybe there's been a large enough.
Yeah, that's not bad.
We have golf.
He's taking care of Grayson.
Good. Or his son.
Yeah, I could have ran out of his up for a few days.
Son.
Went to Lund Crowe. What is it? I have the kids and their dog.
Yeah.
Didn't expect the dog with my dog. There's a dog with his bed.
Stuff starts to accumulate.
Charge. And. But I had some friends from North Calway. The Conker last weekend. Revival Kitchen. Really nice restaurant. It's too much up in North Calway. From New Jersey. She was in the town's office here. They sold the house in New Jersey. She died. Jersey. Months ago.
To New Jersey. Stayed. Fifteenth place. Season hurricane season, most of the two times of the year.
You with him?
I thought we were going down.
I think.
Oh, Carl, you made it.
Hey.
And it's so big. Who won't do it?
Okay. Perfect. Greenies.
All right.
I thought you had a dinner.
Are you going to sit here? Are you?
Oh, yes. Take.
It's.
Oh, my. Oh. Oh. That's. Yeah.
It's hard to tell.
Yeah.
Picture. You see the little thingy. He's not one of them.
I'm going to call that's creation. Tell him it was an accident.
It was financial.
What?
Must have been that.
I'll let you set up before we start.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah.
You. If you want to come in, call us. I know. We're here. All right, thanks. Bye.
Thank you. They walked that out. Yeah, that's what I figured happened. They walked that out.
And the possibility. Okay. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. I know. We're here. All right, thanks. Bye.
Thank you. They walked that out. Yeah, that's what I figured happened. They walked that out.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
It is not. It's Scotland. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's true.
Where is this?
Scotland. Scotland.
Scotland. Scotland. Oh. Two hundred.
Yeah, the Heather.
There we go.
There's a castle on the island. There, you can't quite see it in that shot.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Bill Kennedy. I'm sitting in for Chair Tyler Ward, who's away this evening. To my right is fellow Select Board member Bonnie Tucker. To my left, of course, is Nicole McStay, our town administrator. And hidden behind the scenes is our wizard, Tim Brezovic, who is recording this session, both for live stream on, what have we got, on Comcast and on, what is that? Ustream.
YouTube and Ustream.
And YouTube is also viewing it, streaming it, but it's also recording for later review by those of you at home. Tonight's agenda included a non-public session, which we already performed. We have four public hearings to consider, and I'll get into the details of those as we address them. We have some appointments, and we have some new business. We have a couple, yeah, it looks like three different expenditures. And then we have some old business to attend to, which board and committee meeting appointments and so on and so forth. So to get started, I move that we move to a. Sorry. Sorry.
We're fine. Keep going.
I'm not listening to you yet. Okay, so I want to move to move into public hearing, the first of which. And you want a second?
I second half.
Okay. You vote commercially. Pursuant to RSA 3195-B, to discuss the merits of accepting, first of all, $5,000 from the Menadonk Chapter of the Compassionate Friends for the installation of a memorial bench. Is there someone in the audience who wants to say that? Go ahead. Now, when you are chosen to speak, if you would give your name so we can have it in the public record.
Okay.
And then.
Well, good evening. My name is Barry Etchevaria. I'm a longtime resident of Peterborough. I am the co-leader of the Menadonk Chapter of the Compassionate Friends, and I'm here to make a request. We'd like to make a donation to the town of Peterborough. In 2012, I lost my daughter Valerie at the age of 23, and three years later, I opened up the Menadonk Chapter of the Compassionate Friends. So for the past 10 years, I, along with Linda Shrubinsky, who's a resident of Peterborough, who's my co-leader, along with a number of volunteers, facilitators, we've run support groups to support parents that have lost a child, grandparents that have lost a grandchild, or a sibling that has lost a sibling. So for the past 10 years, we've done great work, but I think we're at a point where we're going to close our chapter. And so the good news is we do have support here in the community, or the Menadonk region, through a chapter that's based in Bradrow, Vermont, that will support families in need if they find themselves on this journey that none of us would want to be on. The Manchester chapter also has made themselves available for Zoom meetings or in-meeting support to help families as well. So just like to read this to the board. This is a donation of a memorial park bench. To the Honorable Members of the Peterborough Select Board, on behalf of the Menadonk Chapter of the Compassionate Friends. A little charted up here. I'm honored to formally acknowledge our donation of $5,000 to the town of Peterborough. These funds are intended to support the installation of a memorial bench, a place of quiet reflection and healing for those in our community who have endured the profound loss of a child, a grandchild, or a sibling. The Compassionate Friends is an international support group, and our Menadonk chapter has served families in this region, excuse me, for the past 10 years. Having fulfilled our mission locally, we are now closing our chapter. During this time, our purpose was to provide comfort, understanding, and connection to grieving families in the Menadonk region. Support will continue, as I mentioned, through the Bradrow chapter and the Manchester chapter, which has graciously offered to assist families here. We have met with Nadia, as well as Seth, Director of Public Works, and together identified a location for the bench near Depot Square, across the bridge, opposite the parking lot. The setting provides an accessible and serene space that we believe will serve the community well, as a place of remembrance and reflection. The proposed bench will stand a lasting symbol of love and remembrance. It will offer a peaceful spot where families and friends can pause, reflect, and honor those who have gone too soon. We hope this contribution will not only enhance the beauty and tranquility of the park, but also serve as a meaningful legacy and enduring reminder for those who grieve or not alone. We are deeply grateful for your consideration of this gift and for your continued commitment to fostering spaces of reflection, remembrance, and healing within our town. With respect and appreciation. Barry Etchevaria and Linda Shrubinsky, on behalf of our committee.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you and your committee for all you've done with people in Peterborough who needed that kind of support. I really appreciate it.
Nadia as well. So you do have a location for this?
We do. Yes. Opposite Depot Square, across the bridge.
So by the parking lot?
Yeah, by the parking lot.
But it's on the river there.
It's on the river. There's a picnic table there right now, and having met with Seth, he agreed that that's a great spot. And, yeah, so with your support, we'd like to make that donation.
Does anyone in the audience like to make comment? Okay. I move that we accept the money.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
There's another item on this particular. It's $4,500 from the Steven Crowe Foundation for the purchase and installation of a scoreboard. Craig, do you want to speak to that?
I'd love to. Yes, thank you. The Crowe Foundation, the Steven Crowe Foundation, the Crowe family, they've been big sports advocates in the town, and with how nice the Peterborough Community Center now looks and the gym's all redone, they'd like to put a scoreboard in to help better programming in there for, it'll be able to be used for basketball. It is a basketball scoreboard, but also for indoor soccer. Volleyball can use it, anything that keeps time and keeps score, basically. So we'd love to accept that donation. They do want to have their sign up of it, and it does match. They did the same exact scoreboard in the middle school in 2016, so other than the color, which matches our color scheme in the gym, it's pretty much the same.
Seems like a no-brainer to me.
Looks like it.
Any other comments?
No, we will. We're having some more electrical work done, so the company that's doing that electrical work will put it, run electricity out to where we're putting the scoreboard, which, if you're in the gym and familiar with it, we're hoping to have a scoreboard on one side of the garage door, and then on the other side, we're looking to paint a rec mural so it kind of matches each other, look great, so.
What is it? Sorry. What is the status of the community center?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the community center, we actually had our very first program in it today, our first rental. The Dublin School started their volleyball season this afternoon.
Oh, really?
And then our senior programming starts at 10:30 tomorrow morning.
Did they have to wear hard hats?
No, the hard hat zone is done. But we're hoping to have kind of a soft opening and open house within the next month or so so folks can come in and see it with more of a, more grand opening once the fire station's done and the whole complex is done, so.
And Craig, you figured out, based on where you're going to put it, that like balls aren't going to crash into it?
Yeah, they're made to get hit by balls, but, yeah, that's, hopefully, it's, I'm more concerned about other things in there than.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. And thanks for all the work on the community center. It was a big project.
It's been a fun project, and we got more bang for our buck than we could have imagined, so we're very fortunate.
That's terrific. Okay, any other comments? You want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move to accept the donation for the scoreboard.
Yeah, I'll second it. You all in favor?
Aye.
What? Okay, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. I will move that we close that particular public hearing. You want a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And I now move to open the next public session pursuant to RSA 79D, to discuss the merits of renewing a barn preservation easement on property located at 140 Mill Hancock Road. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Who wants to speak to this?
Anyone here?
Yes. I'm John Lord, and I'm the owner of the property that includes an historic barn. Yeah. It was built at least in there by 1830, and I didn't have, that's an image, current image of it on the right-hand side. I couldn't make a copy of that to submit, but if you, this is a picture taken approximately 1890, where you can see it was horse-drawn equipment and the family that lived there at that time. The state law provides to provide an incentive for owners to maintain historic properties like this rather than letting them fall down, which many of them have, that the town can grant a discretionary easement to the owner who rehabilitates and maintains the barn in ongoing condition, historic condition. So when I renovated the barn 20 years ago, the town granted that discretionary easement. It has a 10-year life, and I renewed it once, and I'm requesting the town to renew that discretionary easement again. There have been no changes to the barn. It's just a space. It doesn't have any plumbing. Barns attract things, where people want to store them there, but it doesn't have any other function than, you know, some random things inside. So I'm trying to maintain the historic aspect of that farmstead. The little cape was the same cape that's pictured here in 1890, and maintain the field. So the Mill Hancock Road is designated by the town as a scenic road, so I'm trying to maintain the historic agricultural look of my little corner of the town. So I appreciate you renewing that discretionary easement and giving me a small break on my property taxes.
First of all, I commend you for the amount of research that you have put into it.
It was.
Quite an extensive research.
It was a good read. Thank you.
Okay. You were having a chance to read that.
Yes. I loved reading about Mrs. Nye and just the whole, the whole historic picture. It was a very rich package. Thank you, and thorough. I was a little, sorry, Phil.
No, go ahead.
I was a little bit confused when I was looking at the packet. It looked like you were indicating it's currently used for farming, but no, you're saying it's not. Okay.
No. It's kind of emblem of the agricultural past, but I'm not.
Yeah, you're not.
Raising any livestock or trying to mow the fields to keep them from growing in and so forth. But, yeah. Our family's owned this property for over 60 years, and I think if you look back, the Nye family owned it for many, many, probably over 100 years, so in its whole life, it has not had a lot of turnover in terms of its ownership, so it stayed intact. And the way it was originally built, the house is constructed with hand-hewn beams and wooden pegs like the barn and so forth, so.
As part of the packet, I noticed that there was a checklist to determine the level of support that we would provide. Anywhere between 25 and what, 85%?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent. And there was a site visit involved with that?
Potentially could be, if you choose to have one. There's a couple of things that are required. The town's also required to inform the Historic Commission, the Heritage Commission, of, you know, the request, which has been done and is on their agenda for their next meeting, which I believe is scheduled for the 12th. So that'll be coming up. Also, of course, Tyler's not here tonight. He is very interested in, you know, being a member of the Heritage Commission as well in the past, so he's really hoping that rather than act on it tonight, you maybe hold the public hearing, close it, and then take it up again in the future meeting after everyone's had a chance to review it and provide comment.
Right, and this relief will show up in the next tax bill, which is.
Not till the November.
Not till the first, yeah, November or something like that. So we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, and we have 60 days from today. Correct. To make a decision.
Would you be amenable to us visiting the site?
No, I'd be happy to.
My wife and I drove by it yesterday, just going to take a look and see where it was. And I remember driving by that a gazillion times. Boy, that old barn.
Yeah. I mean, ideally, what I would love, aligns with what you're saying, Phil, what I would love is to be able to see it with the Heritage Commission.
Yeah.
So, I mean, because I don't have a trained eye as it relates to historical preservation. I'd like to see it, but I'd like to see it with people who have that expertise.
Is that something we can arrange?
Absolutely, yeah.
And you'll be amenable to?
No, I'd be happy to have anybody come take a look.
Oh, that's great.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else that you want to bring up?
Questions from the audience?
That's what I'm asking. All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't know that we may need to make a motion to table this.
Just close the public hearing.
We'll just close the public hearing. So I move that we close that public hearing.
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. Yeah, it's really, if you get a chance to read through the packet that comes with this meeting, the history behind that barn and all the families involved are really interesting.
Oh, actually, what about the rec vehicle? Do we? We're doing it right now. It's not in that section?
It's another public hearing.
Okay, fair enough.
So I will move to open a public meeting pursuant to RSA 3119, acceptance of a gift of a recreational vehicle from the Dad Duck Community Hospital.
Sorry about that.
No, no. You want a second now?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So as I read the agenda for the meeting, I thought, oh my God, it's accurate, but oh my God, an RV, just what we need. Pictures of Christmas vacation movies and everything going through my mind. So I'm here tonight to ask the Select Board to accept a gift from Menadonk Community Hospital of an RV, and I'll talk about that in just a second. What it is, this is a 34-foot Sunseeker Class C motorhome. It was manufactured in 2018. The hospital bought it with $43,000, about 100 miles on it. They put about 232 miles on it. The furthest it drove it was from the dealership in Merrimack back to Peterborough. Their goal in getting that was to have a location to do vaccines and lab work, as well as potentially house physicians or other people if there was a need to isolate or keep people separately. I put "end of COVID" in quotes, but now that COVID is sort of over, it's been sitting idle, and they tried to come up with something to do with it. After we had the incident, we had an incident earlier this year over on Keenan Drive involving the state police and a resident in town, Chris Weeks, who's the head of security in Orange Management of the hospital, we sort of looked at potentially, you know, do we need a command vehicle or something like that? And in our conversations with both the Fire Department and Police Department, what we really moved to was the need for a vehicle to provide for fire ground or emergency scene rehabilitation and rehab, and some incident coordination. So what is fire ground rehab? As you folks know, firefighting is pretty strenuous activity. It's done no matter the weather, whether it's hot weather, cold weather, you know, humid, muggy, whatever else. And the, one of the things that is incredibly important to the safety of firefighters, which I'll get to in a minute, is the ability to provide medical monitoring, take people's blood pressure, look at their pulse rates, hydration in food, cool them down, manage their own temperature if they're cold, make sure they have dry clothes, just being able to throw on a dry t-shirt and dry socks before putting your turnout gear back on can be huge. And the last thing, which is becoming more and more important, is an area away from the emergency scene for folks to decompress. So if you have particularly argued this incident, maybe there's something involving loss of life or injury of civilians or firefighters or law enforcement also, that's why it's emergency scene, being able to sort of remove yourself from that, what's going on. Currently, the way to, with your rehab is everybody, and I'll go back to the fire we had at Nicole's mom's house last year, you know, everybody literally just flops down on the front lawn. You're not separated from it. You're listening to everything that's going on. You're still sort of getting the collateral stress of that whole incident, so it really isn't conducive to your getting better. So why do we need to do rehab? Really prevents heat, illness, and injury. It's a chance to get people out, have them take their gear off, cool off, combat their fatigue, facilitate their recovery. You know, anybody who does anything, athletic events, hikes or anything, you know, little short breaks can make a big difference when it comes to the next day as you're doing that. Ensure medical appropriateness. You know, we're all, you know, big dumb knuckle draggers, you know, we're going to go back into the fire even if our blood pressure's too high, even if our pulse rate's too high, even if we're severely dehydrated. So what rehab allows you is allows you the ability to have medical personnel evaluate the firefighters or any first responder and say, you know, I'm sorry, I know you really don't go back and play, but your blood pressure has not come down in the last 20 minutes. You can't. You need to sit here longer. And that directly reduces the risk of line-of-duty deaths for firefighters. Again, and along with that is enhancing performance and safety, but also providing essential support. You know, I'll go back to that incident on Keenan Drive. There were a whole bunch of police officers there for a long time. Luckily, it was warm weather. It wasn't cold weather. They were able to, you know, were able to function outside and do that. So this would provide us a dedicated facility for that. So what's in it for the town of Peterborough? We have never in this region, let alone this community, had access to a dedicated rehab facility. We'll park an ambulance, we'll throw a pop-up tent up, we'll plop on the front lawn under a shade tree and take care of that. We've also never really had a way to move resources that are necessary for this rehab to carry out the mission effectively, such as lots of water, you know, Gatorade or sports drinks, warm beverages in the wintertime. Having a bathroom, as silly as it sounds, you know, having a bathroom for responders, I've been looking at that. There are all kinds of rehab vehicles out there. Some of your larger fire districts nationwide have these beautiful, beautiful purpose-built vehicles, but again, cost is always a barrier. This vehicle, the dealer they bought it from, told them they would give them between about $37,000 and $40,000, $41,000 for it. If they wanted to throw it on Facebook Marketplace, maybe they could get 50-ish, but then they'd have to deal with all the literal tire kickers and everything else. So the hospital just made the decision that it really wasn't worth it for them to sell it outright for the amount of work involved, and rather than just trade it or sell it to the dealer, see if there was some other use for it that could benefit the community as a whole, which had been their original intention when they purchased it. So how do we look at it working? What we're asking tonight, and what I'm asking the board, is to accept this on behalf of the Menadok Area Fire Chiefs Association. So MAFKA is a 501(c)(3). My predecessor, Chief Lennox, has actually instrumental in forming that group way back. And it is 27 or so communities, it varies from year to year. In the Menadok region, all of us as fire chiefs come together and work together on some group purchasing, group trainings, working as a local chapter, if you will, or subgroup for the Fire Chiefs Association, as well as working with their dispatch center. MAFKA will assume the cost for the outfitting of that vehicle. I'll show you some pictures and talk about how we envision it looking, as well as all the costs for the supplies in it, maintaining it, fueling it, and everything else. Peterborough will house the vehicle. About a year and a few months from now, we'll have a great place to do that. And we, along with other firefighters in the region, will be trained to operate that vehicle. So bring that vehicle to the scene, set it up, understand how it works, dispose of the gray and black water at the end of an event, be able to do the inventory and the rest of that as we're going forward with that. If we do, if the decision is made to accept this, what are some of the next steps? Menadok Community Hospital would love to do a formal acceptance. Literally, we will hold an event for this with the Menadok Fire Chiefs, with the hospital, with the town, really to, if you will, celebrate the repurposing of this vehicle to, again, help Menadok Community Hospital with their, you know, with their mission of supporting the communities in the area. We'll create an agreement with the Menadok Area Fire Chiefs. That'll have to work out, you know, again, through legal counsel and the rest of that. Menadok Area Fire Chiefs will outfit the vehicle, things like lettering, radio, making sure it has the supplies in it, develop plans and policies for the use of the vehicle, train local staff in proper use of the vehicle. That also includes working with our ambulances in the area that normally are at those scenes on what's involved in medical monitoring, how does that involve? And some of the equipment we buy may be equipment specifically for medical monitoring that's kept in there, so we're not stripping ambulances to be able to do that. Because again, you're taking, you know, what is a very scarce resource in this area, transport ambulance, out of service for those incidents. And then, you know, getting the staff to look at doing that, and then look to place it in service. Let's see some pictures. It needs a bath beyond that. So here's the vehicle, I said, it's 32 feet, it's on a Ford F-450 chassis. So here it has two bump outs. You can see there's a bump out on that side in the back and on this side in the front. You know, a lot of storage space, is that, that is, you know, storage space underneath here, keep things like tables, chairs, you know, coolers, other stuff in there. Inside, how we sort of envision this, we probably will not keep the leather seats. We'll probably go to, you know, hard plastic bench seats or something similar. So this main area here, there's a refrigerator, that would be the area where we could do, you know, provide just sort of general rehab, folks hanging out. There is the back. What is the bedroom now in it, the main bedroom? That room will be turned into a room for a combination of things, either more advanced medical monitoring, somebody who needs to have a little more care, maybe if you're trying to determine transport versus, you know, send them back to the rehab. The other thing that it will provide us is provide us someplace, if we do have what we in public safety refer to as a critical incident, someplace for peer support or chaplains to meet with first responders and start to work on that process if we have a particularly rough incident. Or if we need just a conference room out of the weather for, you know, various first responders agencies, state fire rush to the office, the fire departments, police departments to get together for a quick little meeting, it'll give us someplace out of the, out of the public side to look at that. You know, a lot of storage opportunities here, this is looking at the front, that's that whole front, look for storage there, the shower in there will be able to turn the storage, as I mentioned, there's a lot of storage underneath. So we're pretty confident in looking at this, that we'll be able to really turn it into a robust vehicle that will, you know, will meet a great need for the region that we've never had in the past. There we have it. So it's a little more than just an RV. At least the vision is.
So, Ed, I wanted you to think this through before you made your presentation.
Yeah, I'll come back next week.
No, thank you very much. I think it's a, particularly since the maintenance and everything else is being taken care of, it's going to be shared with the town.
Yes, it's a shared resource. So what we're envisioning is we have what's called a run card. So if we have a fire in Peterborough, we as the Peterborough Fire Department specify who comes, who's invited. So communities would have this as a resource to put on the run card, say for a second alarm or to special call. And it's not just intended for fire department response, also for law enforcement responses. You know, there was the incident in Francis Town more recently than our incident on Keenan Drive where it would be available for that. Motor vehicle accident, you know, long term, people are by the side of the road doing investigations, doing interviews. It would be really a public safety resource for the area.
It'll be housed here?
Housed here.
At the new facility?
Yes.
There apparently is room for it.
Yes. Yep, I'll park the chief's car outside.
Because you'll be on a road trip.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. No, I, go ahead.
I do have just a few questions.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Thank you for the detailed presentation. So the Menadok Fire Chiefs Association, where do they get their funding?
So we get our funding through our member departments. So we do an annual assessment to all the departments, if you have money for that. We also are looking, so myself, Chief Chamberlain from Joffrey and Chief Vanderbilt from Dublin are the three members of that group that are sort of spearheading this. We've already started looking, David, Chief Chamberlain, David Chamberlain has reached out to a couple of local businesses for some grants for certain things and looking at that. We have one department that has a couple of radios that will be able to repurpose to put in this, that are still perfectly good radios, but they got new ones with apparatus. So once we, we didn't get really a whole lot further beyond the thought process because we wanted to make sure all these sort of stars align before we started actually developing a lot. We have the framework as I presented tonight, but, you know, we haven't put everything, you know, laid out.
So we don't know, so there's a line item in our Peterborough budget for our contribution?
Yes, yeah, and that's all we pay.
And that's what we pay. And then what you don't know is whether that line that we kind of traditionally put money in, how, whether it would be sufficient for this?
We do not, so our, we would have a really hard time assessing communities more money than, I mean, I think we might pay a few hundred bucks a year. So it would be very difficult to go to a community of, you know, 1,500 people and say, hey, we want an extra $3,000 from you so we can build this, something that will come to your town once in every five years. Our goal is to look at, like I said, probably through a combination of grants and donations, you know, through some of the local businesses. It isn't going to be that, you know, it isn't super expensive. The basis of it is already there. I mean, the vehicle is what would be that huge cost. I mean, you look at the retail value of that, somewhere in the, you know, $50,000 range or so would really be cost prohibitive for anybody in this financial environment to, you know, a new project for that much would be very difficult.
Yep, yep. Do you have ballpark what you think it's going to take to rent?
We don't. And, I mean, it can be used now, you know, we can throw the water and everything else in it, but to really get it up as we start to build its stages, we really don't know that until we start getting into it.
Okay. And I think you brought this up, but I just want to make sure, it'll be stored here, but it can be used by other communities?
Yes.
So when, after it's been used by the other communities, whose responsibility is it to make sure it's all repacked up?
Yep, so whoever the, whoever the driver is, you know, Menadok Area Fire Chiefs through the outfitting would have certain extra supplies. So for example, we'd have t-shirts, we'd have socks, we'd have, you know, water, we'd have all the rest of those things. And then part of the driver's responsibility, it wouldn't, probably wouldn't be that day, and it may even be a responsibility of the Fire Chiefs Association over the next couple of days, the, those of us that are on the committee for that may be the ones that come together and put it back together.
Okay.
But yeah.
We just don't want to see it on blogs or anything.
We don't.
No.
No, we don't.
Not at all.
Exactly. Because there's also car maintenance that would have to be part of it.
But that, again, that's part of Menadok Association of Fire Chiefs, yeah, that's not part of ours.
Yeah, but we'll do, we'll pay.
Oh, yeah.
Peace, yeah.
Anything else, anyone want to make?
I have a question.
Sure.
Paul knows him.
Okay.
Ed, when another community needs it, who brings it? Will you, will someone from your staff bring it? Will that reduce your manpower?
We have a team, we have a team of drivers. So we just paid having a team of drivers in the region. So although Peterborough is the owner of it, one of the things, and we use Primex as our, they're our insurer, Primex allows for other individuals, volunteers, or employees of other communities to operate that vehicle as long as it is consistent with the intended use of that vehicle. So in other words, you know, we couldn't just let somebody borrow a dump truck to, you know, grab a load of gravel and bring it to their own house, but, you know, for something like this, so, so it is covered. So as for it taking people away, the answer to that really is an emphatic no, because we have a lot of, we're volunteer fire departments, all of us are essentially volunteer fire departments. We have a lot of people still engaged in organizations that really can't actively go into a burning building. They can't respond to a call and be involved in that, but they still want to be involved with the department. So this is really a great opportunity for some of those, I'm getting there now myself, older people in the fire service, to be able to stay engaged in a way that really is valuable and is meaningful to what we do.
Anyone else?
I, layman's question.
Sure.
You talked about removing the leather seats that are currently there, and is that because you want to fit more seats in there or it's just not?
So those, you know, you sit down with a buckle or something, now you break that, now the foam's got water in it and it just starts to deteriorate. So by pulling that out, we could probably put some benches in, get a little more room, and like you said, maybe have, instead of, I think that bench would probably fit four people across it, maybe be able to fit six or eight, so yeah. But it's also just from a durability standpoint, you know, that gets torn and ripped up. Now we've got the cost of reupholstering or whatever that would be.
Also, someone's sitting in a dirty, dirty trunk.
Exactly, yeah, dirty, dirty gear, yeah.
Very difficult to keep clean.
Hard to keep clean.
Thank you. So, yeah. Anyone else? Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I make a motion to accept the recreational vehicle from Menadok Community Hospital.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
And then close?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will now make a motion to close that public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Tom, you're here to talk about the U.S.-Canada Friendship and Solidarity Caravan you're going to...
Yes.
That's coming up when, well, give us the, give us the skinny.
Yes, so, so you've been, been blessed with many gifts from many people, and now you're going to be asked to give back to somebody, and that's us. But we are asking for an endorsement from you for our trip. We are taking a trip up to Canada to show solidarity and friendship to our neighbor, who is a strong economic partner, who as far as I know, hasn't done anything wrong to warrant some of the hostility and challenges to the relationship between our state and the, and Canada. We know there's some, our businesses now are being hurt here in New Hampshire because of some hurt feelings, to put it mildly, from some of, from people up north. Several months ago, Dan particularly came up with this idea of a, of doing something about this issue, because we're neighbors. And so we formed a, similar to the group that the fire department has, we have a 501(c)(3).
501(c)(3), sorry, registered nonprofit?
Yes, so we formed, we put a lot of effort and work into this, we tried to do it the right way. We formed a nonprofit group. It's mostly Peterborough residents, although it does extend to other people in New Hampshire. In Peterborough, the members of the committee are Carl Kaiser, Dan Gross...
Terry Reeves.
Terry Reeves and myself. And then we have a fifth member, Katie Cutshall, who's from Bedford. So the organization is a nonpartisan group. We, we just want to highlight the importance of Canada to us, our historical ties, our cultural ties, our strong economic ties, and we just wanted to make a trip up there to express those thoughts in person. We have written a letter that we should have given to you in August, so you would have time to think it over. But here it is nonetheless. And I could read it to you if you want, I can give it out to everybody in the audience if anyone wants to see it. It's simply an explanation of our, the purpose of our trip, who we're going to see. We're going to meet with the mayor of the, of the town of Sherbrooke, which is where we're traveling to, about four hours up. We're going to, that's going to happen on Saturday. We're leaving from Peterborough on Friday. We've rented out the auditorium upstairs to have a kickoff event. We rented a conference hall up in Sherbrooke to have a corresponding event up there to celebrate and meet with the Canadian officials. And what we're hoping that you will do, and like I said, I know this is incredible short notice, but we were hoping that we could get an endorsement of our trip from you of what we are trying to accomplish. And I'd like to open it up to Dan or Carl if they'd like to add anything to what I've said.
You did a great job. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
We have very strong connection with Canada through our northern border in particular, but we do a lot of commerce with Canada. The tariffs have put a stamp on that, and I understand that our, our commerce is actually down between 25 and 30% over last year because of all that kerfuffle that's been going on, which is kind of crazy. From what I could read, I haven't read it, you need, you need a signed copy of this to take with you when you leave on Saturday?
We're leaving Friday.
You're leaving Friday, so the event is on Friday evening?
So Friday morning, we're going to start with our kickoff event right upstairs.
Okay.
We're driving up there. The event, the formal event will be on Saturday morning. So we'll arrive up there as a group, take a walk around town, informally connect with the people up there. But the formal event itself with the mayor and some par, hopefully some parliamentary members, other local town officials, that's going to take place on the, on the Saturday morning.
I can add a little color to this. So we coordinated this event with the Quebec Office in Boston. Renee Sylvester, who's the delegate there, has been highly supportive, as well as the American Chamber of Commerce in Quebec, the chairman of the board of the AM Chen will be speaking, and possibly a member of parliament, Marianne Dandor. We have also talked to and have the support of the New Hampshire Bureau of Economic Affairs, who will probably be at the kickoff and may even speak at our kickoff event, and is very supportive of our efforts going forward to do follow-up work between New Hampshire and Canada.
What's his name, Dan?
Adam Boltnick. You may have seen his name in a number of press releases. He's currently involved in the trip that our governor is making to Canada, pretty much with the same message that we are making as well. So we are absolutely in sync with what the New Hampshire governor is doing on this. Need to amplify the word.
I can also, just wanted to throw in, late in this afternoon, we received an email from John Chersimion, the executive director of the Franco-American Center of Manchester. He'd also like to reach out and participate if he can, so if I could forward this on to one of you.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this is a snowball, and we've gotten a lot of support. There literally has not been a single person that has not been supportive of the idea.
So is Kelly aware of this specific caravan, her office?
I believe she is, because we have, the BEA is a department in the government, it's headed by Taylor Caswell, who is an appointee of Kelly's. And so, and given her interest in establishing better relations with our northern borders, I believe she is aware of it.
And she, and when is she going up relative to when you're going up?
Right after.
She's going up on the 9th.
On the 9th, okay.
Well, I, from what I read, I'd like to read it a little bit more carefully if you mind, but from what I read, I'm in support of this.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm in support, I think we do need to read it.
Sure.
To make sure we're comfortable with the language.
And I'd like to get Tyler in on this as well.
Yes, same. So we don't have a lot of time, we're here on the 2nd, and they're picking up on the 5th.
Friday.
Friday. When does Tyler get back? I'm not sure what his, what his return date is. I don't know if he'll be available to sign it before, but he could certainly, yeah, sign on his behalf.
Yeah, we could ask.
Yeah.
Can you send me a digital copy of this?
Yes, I was going to offer that so that you have it all, and then, you know, of course, you may want to change it or, you know.
Just make sure we're comfortable with what it says, but I think conceptually we are.
Yes.
And just so we're clear, if we choose to sign it, which we would like to do, what happens to it?
We hand it over.
So when you get to Canada, you hand it to?
Our Canadian, your Canadian counterparts.
Okay.
So what we'd also like to do is publicize it as well, as well as to hand it over.
Sure. Logistically, would it be suffi, I can drop it off at your house, Tom, I know where you live.
I actually pick up your neighbor every morning. I, I actually pick up your neighbor every morning for a walk up Acton, not duck, so.
Oh, really?
But that's a little early. I don't know if you're, yeah, if you want to join this anytime, Bill.
Is that it? Yeah, okay. I guess we'll, well, first of all, let's find out what Tyler's schedule is like. Because I'd like to get him to sign this letter as well, so it's in your hand and this agreement.
And then we'll get it into your hands certainly before Friday.
Well, that's, that's amazing. Thank you so much. I wish we had, you know, this is a group of volunteers just, you know, stumbling along and figuring it out as we go. And we missed the August meetings, so that was, you know, an unfortunate misstep on our behalf. But thank you very much for working with us on this short timeline.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for all the work on this.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just have to turn it on quickly.
All right. The next item on the agenda, was there any other comment from the audience?
Yeah, yeah.
The next item is June Perry and Mike Terrello, Vision Government Solutions update on the 2025 town YB valuation. See you, Craig.
Hello. Thank you.
Yep.
Should I get my?
Never.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Terrello with Vision Government Solutions. I have June Perry with me.
Hi.
We are, we both worked on the project among the other people. So we just want to give you an update of where we are right now. We've gone and started this over the beginning of the year. And what we did was, we converted our software from another software, and we've gone through the process. So I'm just gonna kind of explain that, if anyone sees if I can get it right. Okay, there you go. So the process summed up is that we obviously have to take the data, and working with the assessor's office in the town, we have to convert the data that you have into our software system. We have a method of doing that, through going through all the collection of the information on the properties, and information above tables that they have for valuing. And we ended up collecting all that, and then assisting in collecting data on the specific sales they're using over the last two years to assist us in setting up the new values, along with any permits for, you know, renovations, things that were done, to include that in the data also. That's the first step.
Forgive me. The town has adopted new software from Vision.
Yes.
And this is a presentation of the results of that conversion?
Correct.
Okay.
And the steps that we do, and then the results that we've completed.
Okay.
And we're getting close to setting up to send out notices to the public, so that they can have informal hearings and all go through that process, so that they can ask questions and understand the valuation of their properties. So the next phase of that is, we then collect market data. So market data can be sales of properties, physical information, income and expense information from commercial properties, all the things that we need to set up the tables and the values. The next thing was to actually do that work, to determine the values and so forth, set them up preliminarily. And then we have our team go out and review the new values and the problems, to make sure that each, in the neighborhood, things are equitable, that, you know, the right styles are put on the properties, the right type of quality of construction, condition of the property, the site, that all the components are there, the story heights are corrected properly, do you have garages and barns, are they picked up? All the information that we need, is it accurate based on the new rates that we've set? Once we, and now at the final stage of this being approved by the assessor's office in the community, and we're giving reports and showing the data and going through the statistics, we're gonna show some of that in a little bit. And once that is approved, which will happen very soon, sometime this week or near the end of the week, we'll start to get the letters ready to send them out. And then we'll set up and give approval of a certain type of letter. That'll go out to the public. And then what will happen is, we'll give them time to make a call, set up an appointment. They can do it online. I'll show this on in a moment. And then we can have an informal hearing. We're gonna do it right here in this room. We also give the ability for people to call in and do a phone hearing, say they're out of town or they can't make it, they're on vacation. We can do that. And then we also give the ability for them to send documents to us. So if they have pictures or items and so forth, appraisals, whatever they have, we allow them to look at that, too. So we try to give enough accommodations for everyone to come here, or do it by phone, or by mail. All right. So what we've done is, we've, you know, did all the properties assess change at the same rate? Well, these are questions that people have. Okay, so we're at this process now where we have all the properties. Do you just raise everything like a factor and a percentage, or how do you do it? We don't do it that way. What we do is, we kind of start fresh and look at what's happening in the market by the different types of properties there are, the condition of them, the square footage, like we talked about when we gathered the data. And we try to value fresh, because we all know, as time goes on, there may be certain types of properties that become more desirable than others when the market changes. People may, generations change, people get older. Oh, I'd like to have one-story house. That's more popular than a two-story house, because I don't want to have the stairs, you know, different things like that, so that the values of the properties will go up at a different rate. So we have to adjust for that. And then same thing with how large the houses are small, those things are all counterproductive when we do it. So, you know, what is the role considered, does this prior assessment have to things? Well, really, it's starting fresh, as I said, and the purpose is to revalue with new conditions, and new sales, and new cost data, and income data, and all the things that are relevant now, instead of five years ago. So they're really not changed by a percentage, they're changed based on what the market indicates for those types of properties. So there are three approaches. It's kind of funny how we say there's four, because when we do all the work, the sales approach, we'll get the sales. And then cost approach, if it's new construction, we'll look at the new construction, and the land sales. And then income approach, usually done more on what you can rent the properties for, for the commercial properties, and then what the expenses are, vacancies. And a capitalization rate is just something that takes the income form and then turns it into a value. That's the income approach. The fourth approach we do at the end is common sense. That's the most important one, I think, of all. I've been doing this for 38 years. I always say the most important approach is common sense. Does it look appropriate? Does it look, you know, reasonable for the types of properties? Are things consistent? You know, does it kind of meet the taste and smell test? So we look at all this, and we will put cost approach values on the card, so that we can see what a land value is, what a building cost is, what depreciation is. Because we're required to do that, so we can see the components of value. But they're tested against sales, and they're tested against income, expenses, vacancies, because really, if someone is purchasing an income-producing property, they'll pretty much look at the income approach. If they're looking at a sales property like homes, they'll pretty much look at the sales. Again, this isn't rocket science stuff. It's common sense. However, we are required to put these cost items in there, but they're reflected from the values of the sales approach and the income approach. And that is kind of very important to understand. So it's called like a reconciliation of these property values based on those, oh, excuse me, those approaches. So once, we've used two years' worth of sales, and we're gathering income and expense information in surveys and so forth from the commercial side of current information. And we, we look at this by, kind of what we do is, we look at this like you would look at a table. We want to make sure that it's round all the way around. So we look at it based on location of the properties. We look at it based on the style of the property, the age of the property, the neighborhoods that the properties are in, the elements of the property, all these different things. We're able to run statistical analysis based on all these variables. So we can kind of see as the analogy of, you know, is it really a completely round table, you know? When we walk around, it, oh, does it turn it in or something? Oh, we have to adjust for that. So what we're doing by looking at things at all different angles, we're making sure that we're as consistent as we can be, and then we're counter for all the variables that determine valuation. And that's really very important. That's the common sense of looking at everything and saying, does it look right? And, you know, and the smell test and so forth. So our initial process is being completed, and so far, we've had statistical changes from the previous five years when we set the values. These are the overall changes that have occurred for the whole community. Overall, it's about a 43% over five years. So this is eight to 10% type of a year of increases, which has been kind of similar. It's been more in the earlier years, it's starting to slow down a little bit now, because interest rates went up, and, you know, the values are getting so high that they're slowly slowing down. But over cumulatively, five years, that's been about the average. Single families are about 45%. Conduits are always seem to be a little bit higher, and that's because they're usually entry-level type of property that can come into the community. And sometimes it's a little bit more desirable, but sometimes it's not as many of them available. So they tend to be a little bit higher. Multi-families tend to be sometimes a little bit higher, too, because you can get a little extra income out of it, or you can have family members be there with you. So it adds a little extra services to you. That's why sometimes they're desirable. Plus, there's less of them. They don't come on the market quite as much. Bacon land stayed pretty level to what the overall was, consistent. Apartments, again, also, they're income-producing, and then you can get more higher utility with apartments. So even like a four-unit, five-unit, six-unit can be almost on a lot the same as a house, but it has higher utility, because you can get three or four residents in there instead of just one. So that's a desirable item, too. Mixed use is, can be anything in a community, especially a rural community. Can be a house with a little service shop. It can be downtown, where it's got apartments above, you know, retail and office. And that also seems kind of similar to what the overall is. The industrial, well, we don't have much. There's only about 18 properties, so there's not that many, and a lot of them are utilities and different things like that. So that is about what it is, but it's time to look at a statistic when there's very few properties. The reason why it's a little higher is, we had two more industrial properties that had renovations done to them, so some of that add is permits. So that's a small statistic. The commercial, there's a fair amount, 150 or so commercials, and that's gone slightly light, mostly because the retail part and the mixed-use part, or in this case, the retail part of the properties, they've gone up pretty good. They're in like the 40 range. The office buildings are not going up as fast as some of the other types of car services and shops and retails are. A lot of it is, less people work in the office now, they work from home. So there's less demand for the space. So that's what's brought down the percentage slightly. And there's a decent amount of office space in the community. A lot of medical, could the hospital, you get that? Although the dentists and the professionals seem to be pretty good. It's more the general office that's been pulling it down a little bit. Still relatively close to percentage. And we have not fully done with the commercials. We're at the last dates. We're still making a few changes to this over the next couple of days. But time is time. I had to get it in, so we're just about done. The town's reviewing it, so that could change a little bit. These are styles of properties. So as you can see here, ranches, 48, colonos, 41, raised ranch splits, 55, one, contemporary, 49, caves, 42, conventionals, 49. So they're more in the mid to high range of properties. But you can see, I talked about earlier, the desirability of a raised ranch split or ranch is higher than most of them. And a lot of that is, it's people, generation ages a little bit, people are looking for the one level of home. So those have been a little bit more desirable. I don't just see it in this community. We do work, I do work all over the country, and I see it in a lot of the other places that we go. And, let's face it, new construction is mostly usually as big a house as you can build for the builders, so they can make their money. So a lot of the housing stock for the ranches and the raised ranches are more in the 60s and 70s, maybe early 80s. So there's just not building as many of them either. And some people like to buy it and put a second floor on it. So that takes away the ranch desirability, if you want one level. So that's why those are a little bit higher. These are just some statistics that we do. And it's not rocket scientists. Again, these are some counts of some of the sales that we've had. And the median, or is the midpoint, obviously, and we try to be around 100%. You can see at the bottom, we're right around 100%. And you can see that we try to get with the computer system and all the variables we look at, we get pretty close. And that COD is really just the bell curve that we learned when we were in school. The higher the bell curve, the closer to the midpoints, the lower the coefficient of dispersion. It requested for residential to be at a percentage of 10 for dispersion. We're at about 5. So we're tight. And a lot of it is, because now with the software and the way you do things, looking at all those variables, we can make adjustments for them, and we can make it reasonably tight. So that's based on housing stock. And then these are single families, in-laws is a few of, and a few two families. Most of the housing stock here are single families. So again, close to that 100%. And now you can see that the median sale price is up to $475,000 for a house, based on this, this statistical analysis. So this statistical analysis is a sample of the population. The population is all the properties. So we look at all these different statistical things to try and have the adjustments for the unsold properties be the same adjustments as the sold properties. So we even run a test that gives you the unsold property test, make sure that the percentage change of the sales properties going up, say 45%, the unsold properties are consistently going up at 45% also. So what we do is, we take all these adjustments we do in the computer, we apply them to the sales based on the statistics, and then we apply them to the non-sales. So that way, they're applied equitably. That's why we drive around and make sure that what the sale prices are going for, assessments that we have with the neighbors next to them that have similar houses is similar. And then these are the neighborhoods that we have designated neighborhoods for the residential, and the sales that occurred in it, and then what's happened. And what we do, although you look and say, oh, there's only six sales, seven sales for two years, we can, we've been looking forward at the sales that are occurring after our date. Our date is 4-1-2025. So we had the opportunity for new sales to occur. We've had a chance to look at those also, and to test those to make sure. And then we're doing small types. We may even go back and look at 22 sales, and look at the time trending of those. So we, we look at a lot of data, but the state requires us to do two years, and that's within the contract. So that's what we present. But we look at data almost from the end of the old cycle, past the cycle now. So we can look as much data as possible. The more we can look at, the better. And then what it also does, it gives us an idea of the future slightly, of what's happening since, you know, April, you know, May and June and July, what are the trends there? In June, they still slight. In June, they still slightly going up or is it fairly?
They are still slight, they are still going up.
Like a couple of percentage improvements. But nothing like it was a few years ago when it was going up 10 to 15% a year. My God, things have, and it makes it easier for us when it goes up. We work in Massachusetts, name, we've been all these cycles, Connecticut. I'm seeing the average now is more like 4 to 6% a year over the last couple of years. Before that, it was like 10 to 15. It was, you can't do that. Your money doesn't go up that, your raises don't go up that fast. But it was really something, and why was it? Because interest rates were at 3%. And it was almost like you got to spend it because it's so cheap to own the land, to own the buildings because it's only at 3%. But now when it goes back up to more normal, it's about 6 now, it's regulated.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
What is, if you could go back one?
That's forward. Oh, we're going forward. How do I do the batch?
A little bit.
What's one you're looking at? I'll go back a couple more.
Right there. Nope.
Got it.
There you go. Why is there such a large discrepancy or disparity in the 102 between median appraisal and mean sale as opposed to the other residential zones?
Yes. So mean is a statistic of...
Mean's your numerical average, median's your middle. But why is that one, why is the difference there significantly great? I mean, the difference there is almost 25% as opposed to the difference in the other categories.
Yeah. A few houses may sell for more that are overbuilt and it brings up the mean. So the high end, it doesn't take much to have two or three properties draw up that mean. That is even like a weight of mean.
What's residence 102, is that your rural?
June, is that the outlook in current results?
Okay. It's not married. That makes sense then, yeah. Yeah, that absolutely makes sense then.
Rearboard really high outliers will pull the mean up.
So the average tendency, you know, you always like the mean because it disregards those trends that...
I was just curious, but now that I know those neighborhoods, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I was gonna ask how you divide...
Why that mean is so much higher.
Yeah. The neighborhood consists of a lot of different things, obviously. Geographical areas, housing stock, hills blocking, changing things, railroad tracks. It's amazing how that is. And it's funny is usually the people that live in it and go to it almost identify, oh, you live over in the chalk area or you live over in the west of this. And especially when you get into more communities that are gridded, it's unbelievable. Some assessors can tell me, example is Quincy Mask. Quincy's been around a long time. And the assessor will say, oh, okay, you know, this is Houssneck, it stops at this house. So when I was doing a G I S to develop it, she's almost like, no, you can't count that house. You know, that's in West Quincy. This woman lived about 75, 80 years all of the time and she knew everything about the neighborhoods. So they're designated a lot of time by the people that live in the community. This just shows each year, and the reason 2005 was only six is because we went to 4-1. It's only three months. And you can see the trend. You can see 104, 99, 97. That's a nice trend though. It's not 115, 180, which we were seeing years ago. Not that long, three years ago. So what we're seeing now is it's not a bad time in the sense of revaluing because I think it's going to stay relatively stable, hopefully, for the next couple of years. And you won't have it all of a sudden drop to 80 right away. Now, don't quote me, you never know. Two families, not that many. These are the condominiums. So these are all the complexes. And these are all the ratios within. So what we do with the condos, June, did you have different styles from townhouse? So we identify by style first. Garden style, townhouse style. And then within that, then we value it by the complex. The complex can be in a certain desirable location. It could be a certain type of construction that was done. It can be certain amenities that they have that will make things higher than another complex. So what we do is we do complex adjustments. And then within the complex adjustments, we might do location, if it's an end unit, second floor, third floor. We make those adjustments as needed. And the market data tells us when we need to make those adjustments. Then once we get them all done, our goal is the median tendency and the COD to be under 10. Some complexes are a little higher than others because they might have more variances to them.
You have three self-filled village areas, but you don't have the trails edge here. June, why is that?
That is, one of the, the newer is the trails edge. It's still, it's still classified as a self-field.
That's why there's so many sales.
Right, self-field newer buildings too is trails edge. I live near that's my house.
No problem. That's why we're here. And then, oh, these are the commercials. There's not a lot of true commercial market sales because a lot of them are purchased with lease fee. So lease fee is when they're leases and they could be maybe older leases and they're not market. So there are a few that were reasonably close to the market. But it's really done by adjusting to the local current rents and vacancies and expenses. So there's never a lot of sales. But if I find that there's one that's kind of a tentative will or reasonably new lease, you know, and the purchase of it, I'll put it in. So we can see that there's something there.
And you gather that information through surveys or...?
Through surveys and then also through CoStar and Realty Rates and Cushman and Wakefield and all the stuff that's surrounding your region. And we use all of that. And we do a lot of communities in, around the area. We're working on Bedford coming up and we work on a lot of other ones, Amherst and so forth. So I have a pretty good feel for what the markets are. I've been doing it for 38 years. So that's a little bit of it. Okay. So once we've approved all this and we're all set and you approve the letter, we will schedule two in the next few days, get the letters out within that day, two, it might change a little bit. And then give a couple of weeks for people to receive it and make the calls. And then we'll start the informal hearing process for a few weeks. And then give them the opportunity to schedule the informal hearings. And we can do it, it is by appointment only. And again, we're offering by phone in person and also for them to send information in. And that'll all be identified on the letter of that information, which will be approved by the town.
I've already looked at a draft of it. With Gretchen, we made a couple of small changes and I think it's about ready to go.
I have the latest version.
You do?
Yes. And we'll send a copy out to you as well.
Aye, aye.
Yeah, lots of friends.
Yeah, it's a little procedural, but we try to cover everything. Would you like me to continue?
Yes.
Okay. So when they go online, it'll explain in there where to go online and to access it. And then it comes up with a little grid and you can check the community and what type of properties, residential, the hearing commercials. And then it shows the dates and you pick a time and you block it. And then they give you a little instruction on, well, either to call or to, we had to go. And I think June said they're going to write it clear. I'm just curious. You can also just call our call center. You don't have to go through all that. Some people like to use the computer, some like to use the phone. So what is it all about? So basically, it's an informal hearing. It's not a court hearing or officials. It'll be people that worked on the project and know the area. And they'll basically 10 to 20 minute little discussion basically about reviewing the data, reviewing the physical elements that we put on the house as I talked about earlier, things about the land, any issues they have. And then they're allowed to show us information that they feel we may not have accurate or added things that they feel might adjust the property usually downward, not mostly upward. And then also required if there's anything that they want to give us. Photos, oh, we have a wet basement or we have damage here in the attic. And they'll take photos and give that information to us. And then that'll all be reviewed by the person doing the hearing. And then they'll bring all those to June and her team and commercials to me. And then make decisions and then give it to the assessor's office for them to approve that they're okay with the changes. And then, so we do it as a team. And then we make all those changes. They can also go in and, so this is where you can review data that we can have, information on our website. They can review the assessments. And then they'll have the record of the general information right on the website. They can look at comparables. They have ability to run comp sales of, like in their neighborhood or their style property. They can look at other neighborhoods, neighbors' assessments for consistency. So they can access all this information. And then we have a question and answer thing, what happens during a revaluation. So they can go in, there's all these questions that people have asked along the way. We have questions and answers for them. So the website's pretty good. I think that'll be on your website too.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. And it's also on vgsi.com. You can just go right on it. It says town databases. It's pretty easy to access.
Our property cards won't be updated in time, will they?
It will be, they have to be.
Really?
Yeah.
The new cards?
Yes.
That's why the conversion and the reval all happen at the same time. It's to make sure that everything was within deadline.
And this is all going to be ready, is ready now?
It will be after tonight's meeting.
Yeah, we're just about done. We got them looking at the last few changes on things, but you can see all the statistics are done. All the data's been put in.
Gretchen, you've been reviewing them. Mary Beth's been reviewing them.
Mary Beth has been on it, absolutely.
Yes, and she's working.
Lots of eyes on these.
Well, there's going to be a lot of questions. Because we don't want to read the small type.
Thanks though.
I mean, if we make it larger, it is going to be multiple pages. And the goal was to try to keep it to a single page. So it was challenging.
Yeah, let's...
Let's take a look at it. I think the most important pieces here are going to be the website and your reassessed value and assessment.
Yeah, so are you done or...?
Almost, yes, I am. So what if they disagree with the values after our informal hearings? They can still file for an abatement with the assessor's office. And then they can also, if they're not happy with that, they can appeal it to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals or to the County Superior Court. And then these are the dates and so forth. I think that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
So it was very interesting to listen to your presentation, but you yourself identified the Achilles heel of your approach, which is in a normal market, you can rely on these statistical averages. But if you have sudden market shifts, that causes real problems, particularly if it's on the downswing. And so in your overall assessment, do you assess the risk of a future downswing? Especially in this market that we see today, there are so many potential black swans, as they call them, out there with tariffs and all kinds of chaos. You know, by next year at this time, we could see a huge market swing.
Certainly. So it'll be monitored every year by the state with their equalization study. And you'll know, based on the new set of sales for the next year, what your equalization study will be next year and then the year after. If there's dramatic things that occur, this town is not limited to doing it every five years. They can do it every year if they like. They don't have to do what's considered like a full revaluation. They can do like one that's more of an update or they could just do a statistical adjustment, but not go through all the steps that you just went through. So there's regulatory protections in there that if things are really going up high or really going down low, that they can modify by doing more of a statistical thing, which isn't as costly. But you can do the part that we did where, okay, we've done, data looks good, we got everything. Let's put the new sales in, let's pick up the permits. Let's see where we're at. Oh my goodness, now we're at 112%, 115%. Let's do a little statistical and bring it back down to 100 and move it down 15%. So those things can be done.
And the town did do that in 2010 in response to the dramatic shifts in the market at that time.
After like a third year.
Yeah, exactly, I think it was the third year.
The recession.
Oh, yeah, '08.
So, you know, it's certainly not unprecedented that we see the equalized ratio climb too high over 100% that we take a look at that.
Historically, we've been under.
Yes.
The last 15 years.
Dramatically under in the last couple of years. So this is very timely.
Yeah. And now with the system that we have automated, the assessor's office can do a lot of this themselves. If they need a little assistance and so forth, maybe a consulting thing where we come in and just help them with some of the tables and things. But now they're learning it and they're learning the process. And it's reasonable to understand it and to look at it and say, it'll let you like take data into a little sales file, run a report like those and say, oh my, oh, things are changing. Oh, great, things are stabilized. Not that hard to do.
We'll be coming on your radio.
So one thing that I would like to say, thank you very much for your presentation and going through all the steps so that we understand how you have gotten to the new assessed value. The thing that is concerning, and I know Nicole, you're trying to to find a way to communicate around this, is that the percents that were shown in terms of increases since the last valuation are very large. And let me just finish.
Sure.
And so that doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes will go up. They could go down. It all depends on how your, so we've got this, how your house is valued versus some other house or how your neighborhood is valued versus the relative change. Because in the end, we have this pile of money we have to pay. So we have a pie. We have a pie, we have to divide it up to figure out how much each person's going to pay to fill the pie. The pie is what the pie is. So it's always essentially the same pie. So if everybody's assessed value goes up about the same, which is not necessarily true, you just showed us it's not true. But if everyone's assessed value went up the same, even though the percent change is a lot...
And would increase inventory.
Yeah.
So you spread.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But the point I'm making is that it doesn't necessarily mean your property tax goes up. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
Because...
Good point.
I think that what's going, what I worry about is that people are going to see this really high value compared to what they have on their card right now. And it's going to be scary because they may then very quickly think, oh my God, my taxes are going to go up by that percent. And that's not the case. And I know this is what you're trying to get out of here. And I know this is what you're trying to get at here.
I'm trying to get at there.
Yeah.
It's very difficult though.
It's very difficult. It's very difficult.
I think one of the things that a lot of people don't realize is that the difference between market value and assessed value is reflected every single year through the application of the equalized valuation ratio. It hits your tax bill every single year anyways. It's just when we, when we have such a big disparity, it's really more like a sledgehammer to, you know, increase valuation as opposed to very finely going in, doing the reassessment and making sure that it makes sense based on housing stuff, based on neighborhood, based on all those other characteristics. So, it's a difficult concept for people who wrap their minds around, it took me years working here before I really started to understand it. So, I certainly understand where people who don't live and breathe this stuff every single day struggle with it.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a perennial problem and what enhances the problem is the fact that the tax rate probably will go down this fall, but we won't know until after everybody's got the revale.
Exactly. That's the challenge.
You know, every year we do this.
Yeah, the chick, the egg is before the chicken or whatever. So, yeah, that's exactly right.
All right, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's all on your shoulders now, Gretchen.
Thanks.
Paul, how would they hear?
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, nice to see you all.
We wanna, thank you. We wanna move on to new business. I'm gonna get up, I'm getting scared.
Oh, my God.
If you wanna take a quick break and just stand up. You've been at this room already, what, an hour and a half?
Hour and a half.
For new business, we have a review and approval of the solid waste hauling contract.
Yeah, no one's here.
I saw the...
I saw the...
Details of that, but I...
I do too.
Maybe...
Sorry, one second. Um, yeah, do you want to... So, the waste hauling contract, so Seth sent that to you on Friday.
Yeah.
We went out to three local companies that did it. We got three very different pricing responses for the same contracts. And so, the, thank you.
Thank you.
And so, the, it's really a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. It's waste management, right?
Exactly. It's a lot of waste management.
Yeah, what I appreciated was being able to see the costs laid out very clearly. And it's very, it's very clear that the recommendation will be the lowest cost provider. So, I think...
It's a no-brainer. I vote that we accept the, approve the solid waste hauling contract for...
With waste management?
Waste management, thanks.
And would you like to authorize Seth to sign on your behalf?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
My second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, request to expend from the trust funds.
Yep.
Here's where we get to spend money instead of taking money in, oh, boy. All right, so first of all, up to $150,000 from the Fleet Management Capital Reserve Fund, which would include what equipment?
So, that is the, we've already made the purchase of the equipment. So, this is to get the money back from the capital reserve fund that we've been saving up for.
Oh, right, okay.
So, the equipment is a new F-350 and all of the outfitting, which includes snowplows and sanders and what have you.
Do we need to approve it individually?
I think you can do this as a slate.
Okay.
The $13,000, I believe that was for the radios.
Fire department, yeah.
Yeah, fire.
Radios, yes.
And the $19,300 from the ambulance service revolving fund. This doesn't actually require a vote, but we wanted to stay in the habit of always getting the selectmen to vote on these. That is for the outfitting of the new ambulances that we're gonna, the new ambulances that we're getting in the winter, so.
We approved already.
They have already approved, have already signed the contracts on. But this is for all the equipment that's gonna go into it, or some of the equipment that's gonna go in that way.
So, I vote to approve the expenditures.
I second.
All in favor? All right. Okay. Old business, board and committee appointments. Let's, let's do it by committee. Hi. You're Paul?
I'm Paul, yeah.
Yeah, Rick gave a, a, a nice...
Very good endorsement.
Yeah, very nice endorsement for the...
Well, I wanted to have the opportunity to thank you for your consideration and also to put a name with the face.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And also, I wanted to publicly thank Rick and Kyle Mabzino for their recommendation.
Thank you for coming and it's good to meet you. We saw the memo about it. We heard about your banking experience and that will be very valuable for us on the budget committee.
My biggest concern when I, when I was approached is, I'm a newcomer to town. I've only been here a little over two years. You know, how would I be viewed as a newcomer being on a committee like this? How would, how would, am I a copper bagger or, you know, that sort of thing?
Well, you know, I don't know, Nicole, what you would say, but what I would say is that it'll be a mix of people that have been around a long time and a mix of new people. It's always good to get like fresh eyes on things. So, I think, I think it's great.
Thank you. It's a good committee. I, I, of course, know everyone on that committee. There are some new ones as well from last year. So, this is an appointment as a member, what's your term?
Just until the next election. It's interim and then I'll make a decision then whether I don't wanna go forward. I wanna, I wanna run away.
All right, so I vote to appoint Paul to the budget committee.
I second.
And all in favor? Aye. Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
And with that?
I will say goodnight.
Thanks for meeting, Paul.
Yes, and thanks for sticking it out.
Yeah, thanks for waiting, thanks for...
My wife calls with young mother.
Oh.
Oh, she...
That makes sense.
Nice meeting you all.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thanks for serving.
Thank you, goodnight.
There's a request for zoning board of adjustment. I guess the request was made through Danica's office, although I don't know that there's anyone here to speak on his behalf or...
As an alternate.
Right. You're allowed up to five alternates. Now, I want to just simply make it public notice that Christopher Beidman had actually run for this position in the last election and was sadly defeated at polls.
Yes.
So, this is kind of an interim, but I, I don't see any reason why we should not allow the committee to make determination on who's in here. So, so I do approve the board of adjustment, Christopher.
Yeah, and just to follow on from that, thank you, Bill, for saying that. It is an alternate. Of course, he could be seated if they don't have a quorum. But if he, if he wants to be a standing member of the board, he will have to get voted in.
He could be appointed, can he?
Oh, he could be appointed to fill a vacancy in the short term.
In the short term.
Kind of like what we see here.
Yeah.
But then he would have to get voted in after that.
In other committees, I've seen this things involved, but anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Capital Improvements Plans Committee, let's just do all, Carl, James, Richard, Leandra McDonald, I didn't know she was involved, David Odlun, who's new to the budget committee, Gary Gorsky's on the planning board and Sarah Steinberg, who is on the planning board as well. But I would like it to approve all of those for the committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Committee, James Simms, I met him at one of the recent meetings.
When you came, he was there. That was when he first came.
Right, so I got to know these people a little bit. So, I do approve the appointments.
Yeah, I am an, I'm an, I'm the select board liaison to the recreation committee. So, I've had an opportunity to sit with James and Zach.
Okay.
And I think they will be good contributors to the committee, so I second the motion.
All in favor? I should mention that they're losing a couple of main members, right? Recent, recent, was it Zoe? She didn't wanna...
Yeah, so that's what James, James is filling her role.
Right, okay. James is doing, okay, and Zach is gonna be...
And Zach will be an alternate.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, yes.
As amended?
As amended, yep. I second.
What was the amendment?
I clarified, Bonnie caught it. I, you know, I get interrupted a lot when I'm working on things like minutes, believe it or not. And Bonnie caught where I had been interrupted in the middle of rewriting a section and never actually came back to it, so it read really warily.
Yeah, I saw that piece too.
It just wasn't clear. Yeah. So, I rewrote it, it's, it's all tidied up now.
Well, glad you keep an eye on these things. You get to strike like that writing your D N C presentation.
It does happen.
Okay, I vote to approve.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, hold that. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
6:41 PM.
You told us this was gonna be a long session.
Yep, you did.
You warned us.
You did.